Follow April fifteenth. Getting to order, do your roll call please.
Councilmember Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Pernello.
Present.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Here.
Y'all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, recognitions and presentations. We have a proclamation. Declaring May as frontline worker appreciation month.
Statement, I, Scott Steen, Mayor of the city of Portland, hereby proclaim the month of May is frontline worker appreciation month in the city of Portland and encourage all residents to join in recognizing and honor the role of contributions of our healthcare workers, firefighters, law enforcement officers, EMS personnel and teachers.
Okay, I got a motion to accept. Lane, you're Scott, how was it favors?
Aye.
So again, I want to take a moment to send an appreciation to our chiefs that are here and the two of you, the deputy chief and chief for fire, police, all of our first responders and maybe we could take an extra time this month to really thank the people that are on frontlines, healthcare workers and the patients that people have for home care providers. All that cannot be forgotten. We couldn't do without them and we certainly appreciate everything they do and as well as our teachers. I know we have some in the room that are retired and otherwise. Certainly they're their influence on our young children and we want to keep that going. So let's take this time to reflect and be respectful to them and show them our appreciation. Thank you for everything. Public comments, was anybody signed up? So in in recognition, I thought I would share this document that that I had received from Chief Carrera. So with our drug task force, we tried to, you know, I can call them flags in the ground when we're addressing some of the issues that were causing long systemic problems. So in the last 12 days, just for example, we've covered 1.366 million dollars in drugs in our community as well as, and I'll just read you a couple instances that happened, starting March 31st and that goes up to April 11th. So in those 12 day period we had, so on Monday, March 31st, members of the Portland County Drug Task Force along with the New York State Police Stabilized Stabilization Unit were conducting several week long investigation which culminated in a traffic stop in the city. As a result of the traffic stop, six individuals were arrested. Total of 297 bags of fentanyl, three grams of coke, one gram of methamphetamine were recovered as evidence. Six felony charges and six misdemeanors charged were filed with the defendants in seized narcotics at street value of $1,500. On Thursday, April 3rd, 2025, members of the Portland County Drug Task Force were conducting several week long investigations culminating in a traffic stop in the city of Portland. Traffic stop led to short vehicle pursuit and short foot pursuit, ending with the suspect being arrested without further incident. Approximately seven ounces of fentanyl, 31 grams of cocaine, 181 bags of fentanyl and US currency were recovered in evidence. Three felony charges, seven misdemeanors and several vehicle traffic charges as well. On Tuesday, April 8th, members of the Portland County Drug Task Force were conducting an investigation along with the Ithaca Police Department and Towne County Sheriff Department. This investigation resulted in traffic stop where two individuals were taken into custody. 150 bags of fentanyl, approximately one ounce of cocaine, approximately 100 Xanax pills were recovered as felony charges against the arrested individual. On Wednesday, April 9th, members of the Portland County Drug Task Force were conducting a month-long investigation along with the New York State Attorney General laws. A search warrant was conducted in Onoga County which resulted in 448 grams of methamphetamine, 113 grams of coke, a loaded nine millimeter Glock and an AR-15 were taken as evidence. Street value is approximately 33,700. On Wednesday, April 9th, members of the Portland County Drug Task Force were conducting investigation with the Drug Enforcement DEA. The investigation culminated in traffic stop and subsequent search warrant were for 55 pounds of methamphetamines and one kilogram of cocaine and received, which was seized. The seized narcotics at street value of approximately 1.3 million dollars. On Friday, April 11th, members of the Portland County Drug Task Force were conducting investigation in Drug Enforcement Agency, the DEA. The investigation culminated in multiple search warrants being conducted, approximately nine ounces of cocaine seized, the seized narcotics at street value of about $25,000. So just to give some numbers to that, break it down in math, there were 628 bags. Of those bags, there's 3,140 lethal doses of fentanyl that were seized that could have been for lethal to kill. Cocaine, 141,619 grams of cocaine, or doses, I'm sorry, doses were done. 1,400 grams were done. So 141,619 doses were stopped from being put. Methamphetamines, 25,413 grams, which is 127,065 doses that were stopped from doing that. So all these drugs were narcotics were either in Portland or slated to be delivered in Portland. Well, that's, that's pretty significant. My, you know, I think we should applaud their efforts from our drug task force and the scope that they're working under and their, is their making this a targeted approach to help clean up our city and we thank you for that, Chief. Thank you. That's good stuff. So with that, we'll move to the ward reports.
Well, obviously, we want to continue to thank our police and drug task force. I also want to thank Code for moving extraordinarily fast over the last week and a half to take care of a problem property and to get vehicles that didn't belong there off, to get permits that it didn't have taken care of and to get everything nice and tidy and legal. And this is the most important part, work with the property owners and get them to do it all willingly. I think that makes a huge difference when that happens. Other than that, Ward one.
Thank you.
So, and I too want to thank the drug task force and I also want to thank DPW because I had to contact them about a situation on Glen at the very end of the street. It's a dead end and the pavement is coming up in chunks. So yeah, the street's going to be paved this summer, I found out. Other than that, we're all good in the third ward.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
All quiet in the fourth.
Mr. Thompson.
I have a couple constituents that contacted me. I try to get out about, check out the ward every two weeks. And what I, what I saw on South Main and it's that back road there. No, it's South Main at the very end of the city. We're going to the park.
Denty Way.
Denty Way, yes. The other one.
Deer Way.
Deer Way. And so it's Denty Way. And so right at that intersection, there's quite a bit of torn up pavement that we need to address and DPW's going to be contacted. But I just, we, I know we have a lot of city workers that go back through, forth and through there. So I'm hoping that we can start collaborating when we see things, if we see things, say things. And I think they probably are anyway. But that's something that came up in our ward. And then I want to applaud our Code Office for being all over a fencing issue in our ward. So thank you. That's it.
I appreciate it.
I reserve my time till next time.
Next time.
So are you saying you're multiplying your time?
I don't think it multiplies.
All right.
We have a lot of time.
All right, we went on to the minutes. Did I get a motion to reset the minutes from previous day?
I'll second.
Now, any questions, directions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll rip through these events real quick. Agenda item number one, approve event permit.
Resolve that the city of Portland County Council does hereby approve the issuance of permits without fee as described below for the event National Day of Prayer, May 1st, 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM in Courthouse Park, sponsored by Visions Church. Be it further resolved that the city clerk shall issue said permits conditioned on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements.
Mr. Scott? In a second.
I'll second.
Now, any questions?
Discussion.
Sure.
So I have been contacted by individuals in my, my ward on not voting for, for this resolution. That said, being where I sit and what I believe we need in our city, I stand by our constitution when others may not within our society. And at the same time, the First Amendment is the rule of law across the nation. And the purpose of the National Day of Prayer is for all faiths within our community to come together. And at this point in time in our nation, from what I'm seeing, we need a lot of that. So. Thank you.
Pretty nice, sir. Anybody else?
I also was contacted and I also support the constitution and the fact that it's, it's multiple church, multiple churches coming, it's not just one church. I support it.
So, anybody else? Okay, let's move it, please.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number two, approve event permit.
Resolve that the city of Portland County Council does hereby approve the issuance of permits without fee as described below. The event, the Corn Ducky Derby, or excuse me, the Corn Ducky Derby 5K and U Waddle, sponsored by the YMCA on May 3rd from 8:30 to 11:00 AM in Soggy Park and Vicinity. Be it further resolved that the city clerk shall issue said permits conditioned on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements.
I'll move it.
I'll second. Now, Mr. Scott. Any questions, discussion? Move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number three, approve event permit.
Resolve that the city of Portland County Council does hereby approve the issuance of permits without fee as described below. The event is the Cruise Night Car Show, May 18th. They will come down Port Watson Street from the city line and proceeding down Tompkins Street to the city line from 1:00 PM to 2:45 PM. And that is sponsored by the Central New York Mustang All Board Club. Be it further resolved that the city clerk shall issue said permits conditioned on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements and on approval of the chief of police.
Mr. Scott? In a second. Ms. Lane? Any questions?
I have discussions and, and question. Did we, did we receive a number of how many entries there were for the session? And are there any parameters on what's, what's being allowed on the street? As far as, I understand it could be classics. Granted Mustangs are absolutely one of my favorite vehicles. Had one when I was 19. That didn't last long. But that said, there's, there's certain things that sometimes are placed in those and just want to make sure our streets are safe and our traffic is not put to a, like a tax on streets that are already of concern.
Yeah, usually this event, I've attended it before. There's 70 cars, but they're all licensed in New York State. They have to be licensed and registered appropriately. They can't just be anything.
That's good. But time wise, as there's.
I mean, it's a 15 minute drive all the way through, right? It's about the time limit, isn't it?
Yeah, they, they give an estimated time that lasts about 25 minutes total. You know, to pray through. The sheriff's department, police department are involved in planning and traffic assistance.
Okay.
This one usually ends up at Courtlinson.
Yeah.
Yes.
Chief, do you have any other comments? Have you met with them on this yet?
Yeah, in the past, it hasn't been an issue.
Yeah.
On the intersection.
Yeah. Okay, move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number four, approve event permit.
Resolve that the city of Portland County Council does hereby approve the issuance of permits without fee as described below. Portland County Mental Health Walk sponsored by Catholic Charities on May 15th from 10:00 AM to 2:30 PM. We'll have tabling and presentations at the fairgrounds. Walk to the hospital and return. Resolve that the city clerk shall issue said permits conditioned on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements.
Ms. Lane? Mr. Scott, any questions? Move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Agenda item number five, approve event permit.
Resolve that the city of Portland County Council does hereby approve the issuance of permits without fee as described below. The event is the Portland County Dairy Parade, June 3rd from 6:30 to 8:30 PM, sponsored by the Portland County Dairy Promotion Committee. Be it further resolved that the city clerk shall issue said permits conditioned on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements, not approval by the police chief.
I'll second.
Mr. Scott, now, any questions? I move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number six, approve special agenda.
Resolve that the city of Portland County Council does hereby approve the issuance of permits without fee as described below. The event is the Juneteenth Celebration, June 14th from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM in Courthouse Park, sponsored by the Portland County Communities of Color. And be it further resolved that the city clerk shall issue said permits conditioned on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements.
I'll move.
Mr. Scott? Thompson? Any questions?
This was a great event. The, the attendance was awesome. Went around, met all the vendors, shook all their hands. It was very, very friendly. I thought it was good for the community. There wasn't a bit of disturbance at it. I think it's a wonderful, easygoing, bring the community in celebration. I think it opens up some eyes. It's definitely a good event.
Anything else to concur? Move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number seven, approve event permit.
Resolve that the city of Portland County Council does hereby approve the issuance of permits without fee as described below. The event is riding again sponsored by Charles Hawk and the Troubled Souls Motorcycle Club, June 22nd from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. And they will take a route from the Tompkins City Line on Tompkins Street to Court Street, Grant Street, West Main Street and Homer Ave out to Homer. Be it further resolved that the city clerk shall issue said permits conditioned on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements and on approval by the chief of police.
I'll move.
I'll move. Okay, Mr. Scott, Mr. Beckwith, any questions? Can move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number eight, I'd like to get a motion to pull this item. Mr. Scott?
Sir Beckwith.
The reason for pulling this is in speaking with the state, that we posted with the Portland Standard as our official paper, the day they went our business and they're not accepting that as 13 days prior. So we have to re, do an RFP to resubmit that back through. So with that motion and second, all of the favor to pull this from the agenda?
Aye.
Number nine, agenda, number nine. Set required first public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2025, the Community Development Block Grant Program, upcoming funding round to allow public participation in the grant.
Resolve that a public hearing should be held prior to the county council's scheduled regular meeting at 6:00 PM on May 6th of 2025 at City Hall to discuss the proposed 2025 Community Development Block Grant Program and upcoming funding round to provide information to the public about the CDBG program and to allow the public to provide input into the grant process. And be it further resolved that the public notice of such public hearing shall be published in the official newspaper of the city of Portland.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Mr. Scott? So there'll be more information coming out about these. So this information blog, even though the public hearing is going, so people have the ability to apply for these grants. They're told. Okay, so we have a motion and second. Move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number 10, authorized submission of the 2025 Municipal Parks and Recreational Grant Improvement Project.
Resolve that the city of Portland County Council is authorized and directed to apply for and accept NPR grant funds in an amount not to exceed $1 million for the project described in the grant application. And be it further resolved that the city of Portland is authorized and directed to agree to the terms and conditions of the master contract with the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation for such Randall Park Improvements Project. Be it further resolved that the city of Portland is authorized and directed to agree to the terms and conditions of any required deed of easement granted to OBRHP that affects title to real property owned by the municipality and improved by grant funds, which may be newly recorded public access covenant, conservation easement and/or preservation covenant. And be it further resolved that the county council delegate signing authority to execute the master contract and any amendments there too, any required deed of easement and any other certification.
Move it. Thompson? Ms. Lane? So this is to apply for the grant to continue on the project and hopefully get some lighting and works and then works for that. Any other questions?
Need it.
And us.
For sure.
Keep improving, it's looking better. Can move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number 11, declare police department equipment as surplus and authorize sale at auction.
Resolve that the city of Portland County Council hereby declares a surplus and watch guard in camera car, camera systems, various electronic control switches for lighting systems and two sets of in-car light cars and grants permission to the police department to sell the equipment on Auction International with any proceeds from the sale being placed in Police Department 2025 budget account for equipment sale.
I'll move it.
Now, Mr. Scott, any questions? Can move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number 12, state environmental quality review determination for the land improvement.
Resolve that the city of Portland County Council does hereby classify this action as a type two action pursuant to New York State Code Rules and Regulations, what is it, chapter six, title six, chapter 617 dot 5.5.
I get a motion? Mr. Beckwith, Mr. Scott? Any questions? Then, move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number 13, state environmental quality review determination for land improvement.
Resolve that the city of Portland County Council does hereby classify this action as a type two action pursuant to Title VI of N C N Y C R R, section 617.5.
Mr. Thompson?
Are we doing a secret?
Yeah, you second.
I'll second.
That's all right. That's all right. What's that? Are we doing a secret or is it?
Uh, we're doing a secret.
Was it two to two, did I ask?
Oh, that's what's required.
Does the municipality normally? Oh, great. Is this using another type two?
Sure, it's clear.
Yeah.
Why is Randall wants to reflect on that a little bit? Why is it type two secret? Like, we're good. It's because it's municipality's hefty, right? All type two.
It's type two actions are actions that are minimal in nature that don't have a significant impact, that don't require a full type one. So this, all three of these projects qualify. Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number 14, state environmental quality review determination water quality improvement project.
Resolve that the city of Portland County Council does hereby classify this action as a type two action pursuant to Title VI of N Y C R R, section 617.5.
Move it, Ms. Lane, Mr. Scott, any questions? Can move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Pernello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number 15, I'd like to have a motion to table it to time certain. Move it. Mr. Scott?
I didn't hear that one.
To time certain, I'd like to table it time certain.
Got it.
Mr. Scott, Mr. Beckwith. So because we do not have two thirds majority of the county council here, we cannot hold on this resolution. Because of the, because it needs to be done, we have a timeline that has to be done. I would like to get a time that this, that everybody in this room can make it and I'll try to make sure we can get the other, another party here to make another meeting early next week. And we've been, and we've been volleying with it Tuesday at the same time next week for that work.
If it's 6:00 PM?
Would make sure everybody works here first and then we'll, we'll recruit one more.
Tuesday, it can be the 28th.
So 22nd.
27th.
I hear what, Tuesday.
Yeah, this, that, this Tuesday, what I do is certainly.
Yeah, because the first meeting in June, we don't have a meeting. So we're gonna have to resolve it here eventually.
This will be timed certain and we'll post it and that'll be that's Tuesday at 6:14 next Tuesday.
22nd.
We don't need that.
Okay.
So Tuesday, April 22nd at 6:00 PM.
Mr. Thompson, that works for you.
I'll make it work.
Ms. Lane?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It works.
All right, so we gotta recruit or strength, head grab, strength, grab. All right, so that now, all those in favor to move to time certain, which will be Tuesday at 6:00 PM?
Aye.
Aye.
Close and carry.[1738.65]
Two way now, is there any other business going to be discussed?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Unless something comes up, that's, that would be the only items on your agenda.
Okay.
We'll post that how and how it's going to do.
That's okay. If there was anything.
Under discussion, you have those, here Jade, you have those word block documents?
I give them to Andy.
Okay, so there's, so there's documents in the new blocks. I want everybody to just take pull your ward out and I want you to take a look at that. We're gonna start those word block. Are the dates on there as well for those, for each one?
No, the dates are not. Yep, so there's two walks for each ward.
So you'll see a map there and certainly we're looking right now for input before we make this public information. We'd like to make it that we'll see the start to stop points. And the idea would be to go through that word block and do those dates. Are they on there?
The dates are not included, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we'll, Jade will call up an email to those dates, so that, those are two different walk days to try to split up the ward. So split your ward out to try to cover. And the idea is to get the majority of it and we're, the point of the word blocks is to, for us to get eyes on all of the streets, the sidewalks, the housing stock and all the quality of life issues so we can address them. We can discuss them as a group and discuss them together, put the resources that are necessary. You will follow, followed by meeting at the park if, so they can attend the walk, they could meet us at the park at the end and have one-on-one conversations to address their concerns in their areas and districts. So that gives them two shots at two different time periods to be able to. So any input you have on those maps, any ideas or suggestions? This is Jade's wonderful work and she put it together so the best we could to make it as practical as possible and reasonable, so.
Sidewalks?
Sidewalks will be on the list.
Why is, why isn't even on there? Is that a sidewalk in the city? Doesn't even replace the image. So we already saw that.
Bring an extra little cat. So, but I think it'd be a great, and I think it'd be good for the constituent well, they can walk with us and have a nice chat. I think it'd be great.
Yeah, can we extend to Joseph and Vernon?
Yes, well, just any, any alteration you want to make, just be with Jade, take five minutes afterwards if you want to or call her later and that'd be helpful and get these out to the public and get these scheduled. I think the dates already scheduled.
Yes, the details.
I think everybody, yeah. So if anybody has any ideas or thoughts to that or additions to that, I think it'd be a great way to get out to the public. Now let me have for your terms, I think being able to reach out to the public more frequent is important. So that's the intent of this. So with that, unless somebody else has something else they would like to bring up? entertain a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Mr. Scott?
I'll look at that.
Ms. Lane? All those in favor?
Aye.
And adjourn at six thirty-five.
Nice.